Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Intergroup Relations. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time is anyone to approach the dais. If you would like to sign up for in-person testimony or have any other questions throughout the hearing, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms. Chair Rivera, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilmember Carlina Rivera, Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Intergroup Relations. Welcome to today's oversight hearing supporting New York City's youngest readers. Let me open by quoting journalist Margaret Sullivan, writing yesterday in The Guardian, that "America's beloved public libraries, art organizations, and museums are under siege by the Trump administration and that they are being hurt by deep funding cuts and in some cases, by threats of extinction." She continued by saying that when you take away free access to books and support for the arts, you end up with a less enlightened, more ignorant, and less engaged public. That's a public much more easily manipulated. Ms. Sullivan also quoted from a recent piece in The Atlantic by Adam Serwer, who wrote that "The Trump administration has launched a comprehensive attack on knowledge itself, a war against culture, history, and science." I would say that is an attack on everything that this committee cares about. Let me continue by noting that the federal government has made the future of Head Start also desperately unclear. The Trump administration had first proposed to Congress that Head Start funding be eliminated, thus ending the early education and childcare provided to more than half a million of our neediest children in the U.S. That proposal seems to have been withdrawn. The administration has, however, closed five of the nation's 10 Head Start regional offices and laid off all of their staffers, causing funding delays that could prove devastating to individual Head Start programs. New York City's office is one of the offices that the federal government has now closed. About 35,000 very young New Yorkers, up to the age of five, are served by Head Start programs, and their families are already likely to suffer from other cuts being proposed by the federal government. And with studies by Little by Little School Readiness Program showing that 61% of families with lower incomes have no children's books in their homes, and with a reduction in the support that these families receive and the possible further injury to Head Start programs, it seems that the New York Public Libraries might see a surge in their very youngest patrons, along with their parents and other caregivers. And looking at early literacy programming that our three library systems provide, and I can already tell you that I am very, very impressed. This is personal for me, given my own two children who are still younger than five, younger than three, actually. The variety of the programs, the innovativeness of the programs, the clear focus of the programs, all of it deserves our support and our attention. Let me also note that our three library systems were founding partners in the city council's Own City First Readers Initiative, which was established in 2014. This initiative brings together 17 organizations to collaborate on, co-create, and co-promote programs for our youngest constituents. Many of these programs are designed to reach our children in high-poverty neighborhoods and to support our most vulnerable communities. I am proud to tell you that attendance at our libraries' programs for young children surpassed 850,000 last year, which was a 30% increase over the previous year. I'm hoping we can do that again. This committee hopes to learn what we can do to provide what the libraries need as they continue putting toddlers on the path to becoming good readers and to developing a lifelong love of reading. I know my children love, love, love their stories. Now, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee who are present. I see Councilmembers Lewis, Ung, and Carr. I would like to thank the committee staff who put together this hearing, Christina Yalamati, the committee's counsel, Regina Paul, the committee's senior policy analyst, Sandra Gray, the committee's finance analyst. And I would like to thank my staff, Katie Lowe, my chief of staff, and Eddie Amador, my director of legislation. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify that you must fill out the white appearance card, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance of this room, even if you've already registered in advance that you will be testifying in person today. I am also going to ask my colleagues to limit any questions and comments to five minutes. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. So let's start the testimony now, and we'll begin with this illustrious panel.
My name is Eva Shapiro.
Is this on?
Can you hear me better now? Sounds better. All right.
Just hold on before I... I think BPL, we're missing your card, but we'll get it afterwards. And please, start whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Eva Shapiro, and I'm the Associate Director of Early Literacy Programs and Services at the New York Public Library. Supporting the city's youngest New Yorkers has been part of the library's mission since its founding. On that very first day that the doors of our central branch opened in 1895, the city's youngest patrons poured into the children's room, welcomed by Anne Carol Moore, a pioneer in children's librarianship. At the Seward Park Library on the Lower East Side, children had access to spacious reading rooms, a respite from crowded tenement apartments. Librarians Ernestine Rose and Porta Belpray were the first to bring collections for children in Chinese, Yiddish, and Spanish to serve the waves of immigrants who arrived at our city at the turn of the century. They saw the library's potential to meet the needs of communities for the common good. Today, we continue to build on their legacy by offering early literacy programs that support and foster strong, lasting relationships between children and their caregivers, the library, the community, and themselves. The library's diverse selection of programs are offered in multiple languages and target all stages of development. They include storytime, play, art programs, our community outreach offerings, such as baby showers and caregiver conversations for new parents. Our partnerships with the Department of Correction, DOE, parks, pediatric clinics, shelters, healthcare centers, daycare, Head Start, and family childcare providers reach parents and caregivers in underserved neighborhoods to share resources, information, and host early literacy programs. In FY '24 and '25, we distributed 24,000 trilingual kits. You have one up there for each of you. I added a new early childhood educator kit specifically to reach our Head Start and family childcare providers this year. We know that a child's home environment plays a key role in the development of early literacy skills, which are a strong indicator for future school success. However, we also recognize that access to early childhood education is not equally accessible to all. Over the last year, we have invested in creating new branch spaces that promote caregiver and child interaction, early learning through play, and encourage families to stay in the library beyond early literacy programming. In FY '24 and '25, we administered 25 early literacy space grants to branches across the system. We expanded our program like Little Learners, Caregiver Conversations, and Community Baby Showers to provide caregivers the skills and resources they need to cultivate a lifelong love of reading. In just quarters one and two of this fiscal year, we've offered 2,000 play programs with 35,000 attendees and hosted 1,800 early childhood class visits that served 30,000 children and early childhood teachers. Our new pop-up Play Day events launched this year, and they celebrate the power of play and early literacy skills by transforming our branches and parks into early learning playgrounds for babies and toddlers. Programs like these connect caregivers to each other in a welcoming and friendly environment and an important part of building community at the library. The library also understands our responsibility to select, evaluate, and critically engage with storytime materials. At Storytime, we highlight materials representing the diversity in languages and cultures present in our local communities. In FY '24, we offered 16 professional development workshops for children's staff on a variety of topics, including instruction on how to combine the best practices in special education with librarianship to create sensory storytime programs that are inclusive, interacting, and engaging for children with and without disabilities. In FY '25, we've offered nine full-day professional development workshops for staff with a specific focus on supporting infants, their caregivers, and multilingual families. The library provides each branch access to a curated collection of high-quality, diverse, and developmentally appropriate picture books that are available to use at all of our early literacy programs. In the first half of this fiscal year, we offered 3,700 storytimes with over 98,000 attendees. Furthermore, to ensure we provide high-quality programming, we administer an annual storytime survey to all of our patrons at our branches. From last year's June 2024 survey, many respondents found the library to be the most important resource they had for their child's socialization and where to get books to read with their child. More than half of the respondents saw a dramatic increase in the amount they read at home with their child since coming to Storytime. The feedback we receive from our staff and our patrons help inform our programs and services. We expanded our caregiver conversations to include a new six-week doula series with an expert in infant development. Additionally, we've gone on to expand our multilingual eight-week series, the Little Learners program, to include new languages like Bangla and engaging Spanish and Mandarin performing artists as a creative way to increase interest and participation in those communities. The council's support through City's First Readers Initiative and the Speakers New York City Reads Initiative are key funding sources for early literacy. This funding supports branch programming budgets, our space grants, the outreach kits, Little Learners, professional development for staff, and our dedicated outreach positions. However, this funding has not been able to keep up with the growing costs that need to be covered properly to meet the increased demand for our vital services. This has impacted our ability to increase programming budgets for branches, and our multilingual language programs, such as Little Learners, are now only offered at branches twice a year. An increase in funding would allow for a third series to provide vital multilingual programming during the summer months. Additional funding would also support the creation of new early literacy space grants to create these safe, developmentally appropriate spaces in more of our branches, expand the number of outreach to associates to conduct programming in our communities, and increase the number of early childhood educators and resources to support early childhood classrooms across the city. As demand for library services continue to grow, the council's support will ensure that libraries are able to address the growing need and are prepared to support the city's youngest readers as families face potential federal cuts to the Head Start program. As we look ahead, we are grateful to the council for your continued support and look to you as partners to help libraries close early literacy gaps. Your support allows us to provide high-quality, free, early literacy programming and resources in every single neighborhood branch, especially in communities with less access to free early childhood programs. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good afternoon. My name is Roxana Benavides, and I am the proud manager of the Sunset Park Library, one of the busiest branches of both Brooklyn Public Library and the entire city. Thank you to the committee and the city council for the opportunity to be here today to celebrate, highlight, and advocate for library workers and our essential work with New York City's youngest readers. I began at the Brooklyn Public Library over 30 years ago as a library trainee, and I had been a librarian and the branch manager at the Sunset Park Library since 2005. Working with children and their parents and caregivers is one of the greatest joys of my professional life. In 2023, we opened a brand-new Sunset Park Library, nearly doubling our space to 20,000 square feet. It was the first project in the city to combine a public library and 100% affordable housing. This expanding space has allowed us to grow and deepen our programs for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, and to strengthen our outreach to local schools, childcare centers, and community partners in Sunset Park. 15 years ago, I created a bilingual storytime program called La Hora Magica de los Pequeños in response to a request for our local school superintendent. At the time, local pre-K programs were seeing new enrolled students, many of them children of Spanish and Chinese-speaking immigrants. These children arriving were arriving with limited English and little early literacy experience. Families were eager to support their kids, but they didn't know how to. That's how La Hora Magica was born. Every week, we sang, we read, we danced, we played, in Spanish and English, including some of the songs of the bilingual rhyme cards that you have in front of you. But more than all that, we teach parents and caregivers how to be their children's first teachers, and that literacy begins at home, in the language they know best. Many were surprised to learn that the speaking Spanish helped their children thrive in English. Researchers tell us that a strong language skill in a child's home language leads to stronger outcomes in English. And I see this true play out every single day at the Sunset Park branch, and so are all many of my colleagues. Preparing parents and children for school success is the same spirit behind our Ready Set Kindergarten program. You have a booklet in front of you for this program. It is designed to make sure both children's and their caregivers are ready for kindergarten. Thank you to the generous support of the council through the City's First Readers Initiative. We now offer this Well-Love, and I emphasize Well-Love, program at over 20 BPL locations across Brooklyn Public Library, across Brooklyn. My colleagues across BPL 62 locations hosted almost 18,000 programs for children's in fiscal year 2024, attended by 500,000 kids, half a million kids. We are offering storytimes in 12 languages. We collectively circulated books and other materials for kids almost 3 million times during the same period. BPL Early Shaukun Simponsion on Early Literacy and the Science of Reading was attended by over 350 people. The library offered workshops on early literacy and balancing screen time at preschools, the pre-K programs, and childcare centers throughout the borough. As a librarian and branch manager, it is my privilege to encourage our youngest New Yorkers. I am proud to know that I and all of my colleagues do this public service with the support of you here in this room. Thank you so much for standing with us for your continued investment in the library system's future. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Angel Deneve, and I'm the coordinator of Early Learning Services at Queens Public Library. It's a pleasure to be here today with you to discuss how the library supports early literacy and encourages the love of reading amongst our youngest New Yorkers. Queens Public Library transforms lives by cultivating personal and intellectual growth and by building strong communities. Our libraries throughout the borough welcome visitors of all ages to explore and learn in inspiring and trusted spaces, and this is especially true over our children's areas. These nurturing, literacy-rich spaces are filled with age-appropriate books, toys, manipulatives, games, and child-friendly furniture with staff who are dedicated to supporting every child's developmental and educational journey. We believe it is never too early to introduce literacy into the lives of our users and that our offerings must evolve as children grow and have new needs and interests. Through our QPL Baby Initiative, we support maternal health and early childhood development and learning at the earliest stage of a child's life with programs, services, and resources, including health workshops, dedicated support groups, and educational classes for the entire family. Programs include Baby Basics, a virtual series that provides education and guidance to expectant parents and new families, and New Mama's Virtual Support Group, a weekly group for individuals who recently had a baby. Through the library's partnerships with NYC Health and Hospitals Elmhurst in Queens, Flushing and Jamaica Hospitals, LIJ Forest Hills, and the Joseph P. Adabo Health Center at Arvern, caregivers and their newborns leaving the hospital after birth or at their one-month well visit receive QPL Baby Kits containing an application for a special edition library card, a QPL Baby Bib, and information about early learning library resources. For children ages one to three, we have our in-person toddler learning centers. Offered at 30 branches twice a year, this five-week course combines social and emotional learning experiences for toddlers while providing parents with an opportunity to speak to child specialists. For ages three to four, the library offers Kick Off to Kindergarten, which seeks to build pre-literacy skills through guided, interactive storytimes, early literacy games, and activities over seven weeks. Both initiatives emphasize the role of the caregiver and the importance of their involvement in fostering a love of reading by providing parenting tools, information on early literacy, reading methods, nutrition, speech development, and the importance of play. In February, we launched 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, joining a nationwide initiative that aims to establish strong early literacy skills through encouraging parents and caregivers to read with their young children, both in and outside of the library. Anyone can join at one of the 12 initial branch locations by picking up a reading log to start the challenge. In an effort to inform more families about free literacy services, Queens Public Library introduced the text communication platform Lantern. This service allows us to directly share with caregivers age-specific information on local library programming in their zip code, parenting and behavioral tips, health and safety guidance, and other resources via weekly texts. We're hopeful that this will help bring more families who are in need of assistance to the library. None of the above would be possible without the ardent support of the city council. The City's First Readers Initiative, through which Queens Public Library receives $438,114, allows us to offer system-wide specialized early learning programs that are available to all at no cost. The funding also supports eight staff members who are responsible for our early learning offerings, including early learning specialists who assist the children's librarians, lead in-person programs, and advise caregivers on the importance of play, and early learning educators who conduct program outreach to 3K, pre-K, and kindergarten classes. So far this fiscal year, our overall attendance for City's First Readers activities has been more than 200,000. Thank you for your incredible support. If you walk into a QPL branch on a Wednesday morning, no matter where you are in the borough, there will be an early learning program led by our talented staff filled with books, songs, finger plays, and other activities to entertain and stimulate the minds of our youngest users. These programs introduce families and caregivers to the five key early literacy practices: talking, singing, reading, writing, playing, which they can replicate at home with their child. Tomorrow, New York City's Public Library Systems, along with New York City Public Schools and the New York Life Foundation, are launching our Summer at the Library Initiative. Libraries across the city will have packed event schedules promoting reading and learning throughout the summer months. Additionally, Queens Public Library continues our partnership with New York City Public Schools by serving summer meals at 46 libraries, ensuring students are nourished while school is out. Last year, Queens Public Library had an attendance of more than 128,000 for our summer learning programs and served more than 25,000 meals at our sites. This is only a snapshot of the amazing educational opportunities we provide for our youth and families. Each day, our branches host after-school homework help where students receive individualized assistance, library visits for schools and daycares, countless youth programs focused on discovery, and sparking curiosity, and more. As we look towards the upcoming fiscal year, we hope we will receive the funding needed to ensure we can meet and evolve with the needs of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to add, we've been joined by Councilmember Hudson. I just want to thank you all for your testimony. I think you're so specific in terms of each stage of a child's life up to the age of five, and I think that's really special in terms of its intentionality. As, you know, someone who has been with an infant and like unclear where to go or what to do, and understanding that actually reading to an infant is a good thing. It's helpful to them. It starts the reading sort of relationship early. And I know that some of the branches, even Epiphany in my own district, offers someone to read a story, storytime, while you're doing tummy time with the baby, which is like, so, that's so cute, but also very necessary. So I just want to thank you for all of your branches being so welcoming to families of all ages, of all backgrounds. The language component that you provide is incredibly inclusive and impressive, and you've really partnered with very interesting organizations, caregivers, pediatricians, doulas. It's just very, very impressive and inclusive, and I just want to thank you. So let me just ask a few questions of you all. How do you measure the impact of your early childhood literacy programs on school readiness or long-term reading habits?
So I think what's really unique about the library is that we can look at the impact of the caregiver parent bringing their child, because we know that, like said by my colleagues, that is your child's first teacher. So the way we look at impact is we survey at all of our programs. We do an annual survey. We also survey specifically after our multilingual Little Learners program and Caregiver Conversations, such as a series with the doula. And some of the questions we look at are actually the caregiver well-being questions. So do you feel more supported? Do you feel less isolated? Do you feel less stressed? And we can see if the impact of our program is having on that adult caregiver. We know that they're going to be able to support their child for those really necessary steps later when they reach kind of like the formal education age. So we're really focused on surveying the parents and adult caregivers and seeing the impact on them as the caregiver, and then seeing how that trickles and follows up with the child. We're not surveying or, you know, assessing the individual children, but I feel like that data is really interesting to follow, and it's also really informative of how we modify the programs and can be responsive to what communities really want to see, which I feel like gives them more incentive to be engaged in the program and work with their child outside of our programs.
I would just add that our role really is to support and educate the families so that they can do as much as they can on their own, you know, with the information we give them. And most of the, we don't measure anything formally, but it's feedback. And we usually get very positive feedback, and a lot, I'd say most, of the parents say that they hadn't, they didn't know about the five early literacy practices or they never heard of dialogic reading. So we are giving them new skills that they can do with their children that will help to prepare them. So we know it's a positive impact. We just can't measure it from start to finish.
Just to follow through what actually has been mentioned before by our colleagues here. We do not actually do any tracking like formally like that because we don't want to hinder actual participation and that. What we do is regular, what we do is self-reporting, surveying that we have. And we have some statistics, for instance, from those surveys that we had done from some of the programs that we sent. About 70% of the parents reported learning about early learning literacy concepts and practices from attending our programs. And then also about 68% of them, they tell us that they feel now comfortable about practicing actually early literacy with their kids. And about 86% of them, also parents and caregivers, reported also that their children have more opportunities for social interaction, which is something very important also for the parents and, you know, for that. Once they're ready. Once they're ready to go to a 3K or a pre-K, they already have those skills, those abilities to be with other kids.
And I thank you for that. I just brought my kids to the playground yesterday afternoon, and I, you know, you don't see them for a second, and you're like, oh my goodness, where is he? And he actually went to a mom who was reading her kid a book. You know what I mean? So they have this playground equipment, they have all of this available, but they still were drawn to storytime, and there's still that level of social interaction, because there's a parent there, there's like three other kids. And I just thought it was really sweet and just a testament to the power of books. I know you all give away also a ton of books. I've actually done events with library systems where people will line up like way ahead of time just to have access, and I think that's so important, because $12, $22 for a book can be very, very cost prohibitive for families, when that is the difference between groceries and, you know, and anything else that they may need, or even medication. I think your movement to help people understand the importance of early childhood literacy is so profound. What efforts are you making to ensure that your early literacy programs are accessible to low-income families, especially those who may not have books at home? And are there challenges? I know, I know funding, and that's okay, you can talk about funding as much as you want. I think that's perfectly acceptable, especially right now, before the budget is passed. What challenges do you also face in expanding some of that programming to those undersourced resource, under-resourced neighborhoods?
I think this is a really important question and something that we're really dedicated to, is how do we make sure that families in lower-resourced communities are accessing our programs? And something that we've done at the New York Public Library is really formed a dedicated outreach team. So not only are we offering these amazing multilingual programs, offering our Caregiver Conversation Series, and making sure that they're available in communities that may not have access to these programs to pay for them, we're really dedicating, having staff who are going into the community. So, you know, it's like build it, they will come, you have to let people know these programs are happening. We have incredible partnerships with another organization within City's First Readers, Reach Out and Read, so we've been able to access pediatricians across the city and community health sites. So we're going in there, and we're giving books to take home, we're also giving them literature about how they can get a library card and go to our programs, and really meeting families where they are, which I think has been a really successful way of getting families into our branches and making sure that we have the programs they want. Like I mentioned, making sure we have the language access. So if we're going into a Spanish-speaking community, making sure that we have a Spanish storytime, that we're promoting that. That's kind of been a key piece for us, and I think that always takes funding. We're talking about people who are investing literal staff members who are going into these communities, they're offering storytime in the pediatrician's office, like a little sample of what you'll get, and that takes time and resources, but I think that's been really positive. And as you mentioned, also the book giveaway component, when we're going into these community spaces, we're also giving families a book, which I think is really powerful. They're getting a taste of storytime, how fun it is, but also we're saying, come back, you're welcome. So that's something that we're really conscious of, and I think we've really dedicated through having these outreach positions.
Yeah, I would just add to that outreach effort. It really is the biggest component, is finding the people where they are, because not everyone knows about the library and the things we offer. So especially through our QPL Baby Initiative, I've had a chance to go to a lot of hospitals and to meet with the patients there, requested by the doctors there, and talk to them about early literacy, and give them one of our free baby kits, and tell them about the Lantern texting service for support and all these free options. And a lot of our programs are done in person and virtual, so they have the option of choosing which way works best for them, and everything's always free, open to all. You don't even need a library card to attend programs. So we just try to make it as available as possible and get the word out as much as we can.
All our branches, all our branches in Brooklyn Public Library offer first-year programs. That's one of the things that we, meaning there is access, accessibility, so within walking distance for any of these families to come. But we don't wait just for that. Also, we also go through the different places, and we do a lot of outreach. Just yesterday, I went to one of the schools, and I was so happy to present a program for children's first years old, I mean, first graders. However, I was also, like, also our counterpacts, we want to start preparing also for our summer reading program, right? So I mentioned about the summer reading programs and some of the materials that, thanks to the City First Readers, we are able to provide books, we are able to provide certain materials that they can take, and when we do this, we do it also when we do outreach. So one of the kids actually who was there, he was saying, oh, I was there, like it was many years ago, I was there like at the last one, and I got actually a book. So it was like many years ago that happened, they felt like they were so older, but they have been coming. These are the kids who were coming to our first-year programs, and they remember and they continue to write. They were so happy to know that we continue to come and that we continue to think of them and their education, and that we are connecting not only through that, to them, but also to their families. So whenever we go out, also we take advantages and we do some outreach programs where the families are there, and we provide the materials that are the ones that are going to support all that is going on actually in the formal education centers. So we work also with our partner organizations also. Schools are number one, but also childcare centers, daycares, and all our organizations for them. So we present all that. This is thank you, I mean, we need to really emphasize how much City's First Readers has helped us actually, allow us to offer free books for families to keep building, you know, a strong, a strong basis for early childhood literacy at home. They can have their own libraries, they can toys, even toys and tools that they can use at home.
Thank you for that. I remember the, I got a book at the Hamilton Fish, it was like the closest library, though I went to Seward Park, Tompkins, I went everywhere I could walk to. But I remember they gave me this book, Strega Nona, which is like this great story with like magic spaghetti, and I still have the book, so I probably got that book in like ninety-three or something. And I'm holding on to it, because I'm going to like read it to my boys, and like the oldest one, he's just starting to talk about magic, you know? So I'm like, all right, we're almost there, and I'll certainly read it before he reads, before he reaches kindergarten. I wanted to ask actually about A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, because I think it's just an amazing program. Twelve Queens Public Library branches currently participating. How did you decide individual branches, and are there plans to expand it?
Yeah, so we just launched it as a pilot in February. It's something I wanted to do for a while. It's an initiative that's been around for a very long time, I want to say maybe twenty, twenty-five years. I don't know, it's a long time. Basically, we looked at the branches that had the largest early learning populations and that had staff support to maintain the program, because there is a bit of work on their end to do it. But all they have to do is come and pick up a reading log, and as they participate, they do little social media posts when they complete one hundred books or two hundred books. They get a little sign, a little sticker. When they complete the whole challenge, they will get a certificate, a T-shirt, and a free book. We give away a lot of free books at our programs as well. And the goal is to expand it system-wide. So we started small to see how it would go and how much it would cost. I would love to expand it to all the branches in the future, budget allowing. We'll see what happens.
Excellent. It's very exciting. I know that the New York Public Library, you have some very cool specialized programming adventures with Floor, Symphony, Superstars. What strategies do you use to spread these opportunities across the branches?
Yeah, so those are all part of our Little Learner Series, which is this eight-week focus on multilingual programming that we offer in the fall and the spring. And we actually really pair those, we really try to pair them where the language need is, so really thinking about where we need, there may not be a staff member that speaks that language, so a lot of it is matching language need. We also try to really make sure that they're going into the most under-resourced communities where families may not have access to these types of programs, can usually cost quite a bit of money to attend. So those are kind of the two factors, and then we also rotate through so that we're really hitting every single neighborhood so that there's access kind of, you know, equitably spread out throughout the system. But those are both examples of Little Learners programs, which are those specific, you know, multilingual programs that are a lot of fun, and they've also really shown us some also really great partnerships with other large city institutions. We also have a partnership with Lincoln Center Jazz through that, where they offer a bilingual jazz program. So it's been a great way also to connect with other community partners as well.
Very cool. And I know in Brooklyn, you mentioned all of the languages that you have provided programming in, which is incredible, I can imagine. I know at Elmhurst, you can walk into Elmhurst Hospital and hear like a hundred languages. And have you explored partnerships in Brooklyn with early childhood centers or other community organizations to connect new parents to programs like babies and books?
We do have actually partnerships in terms of also even with organizations that provide home care, you know, to connect with home education-based programs that we have. For instance, we have been collaborating with the CFR partner with the Committee for, I'm so sorry, the Committee for Hispanic Children's and Hispanic Children's and Families in there, in order to do for home, you know, home education-based organizations. But we also are partnering also, this year we started with Life also, to provide these programs at the schools for parents, for teen parents, and that we have that. So our programs also are being connected with every single childcare location. We do also do outreach in there in maintaining what we call community resources, meaning including all other locations where we can collaborate. The demand is so big, and that for this type of programming, and especially now that they're being threatened by budget cuts, we expect that we will going to be receiving, like you mentioned before, we're going to be receiving more and more coming through our doors. And we're ready, the staff is ready in terms of to welcome that. But we are also are looking to see if it's possible for, to continue with the support that we receive from the City's First Readers, to see if we can actually have an increase to accommodate that potential, potential flow of new members, of new library, you know, participants or patrons. Our little, our little, our younger kids actually are the ones that are the most excited about when they come through our doors, or when they see us come through their, whether it is a childcare center, or when we go to their schools, or when we go to the different preschools, et cetera, and centers that we see. And their family are very much appreciative of that, but we can see that, that we need to prepare for that. So we really appreciate the support that we're receiving from the City Council.
Well, I just want to say, you know, I've gotten to participate in this like multilingual programming at the Brooklyn Children's Museum, and I'm excited to go to the Queens launch tomorrow morning, because whenever I ask a young person, like, what are they excited about for summer? Sometimes I ask a very open question. Sometimes I ask, what books are you excited to read this summer? Because I know that the summer reading and the programming you provided was instrumental to me. I would, again, Hamfish is adjacent to a pool, by the way, and I would choose the library over the public pool. So it is just this environment that you all create in your spaces that is really friendly and welcoming, and I just want to thank you for all that you do. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add for the record? I know that the City Council has to be supportive, it's our civic duty. You are these incredible democratic institutions that really just support families regardless of who they are or where they come from. But I want to thank you for your testimony today and the service that you provide, and just say it's been a real honor to work with the systems. Thank you.
Thank you.
I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times, and as such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, supporting New York City's youngest readers. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. I will now call the first panel. Karen Rogel. Rogel. And again, I want to thank all the systems for being here and the materials that you provided. I know the City Council members are putting forward these programmings and really making sure that we publicize them to our constituents. You're doing incredible work, and we're so thankful for our partners. So please start whenever you feel the need.
Okay. Thank you, Chairmember Rivera, and thank you for being our guest reader at our last October big CFR celebration. And thank you to the committee members for the opportunity to testify on behalf of New York City's youngest readers. My name is Karen Rogel, and I am a Director of Strategic Initiatives at Literacy and Community, known as LINK. And LINK is the facilitating partner for City's First Readers, the City Council's only early literacy initiative. Seventeen partners strong, we serve families with children from birth to five years old in every council district across the five boroughs. And all three library systems are the key members of our highly collaborative effort. But why is this work so important? Because learning to read starts at birth, and the capacity to learn to read is heavily influenced by a child's prenatal environment. Eighty percent of a child's brain development takes place by the age of three, and ninety percent by the age of five. Being ready to learn how to read depends on healthy brain development, overall well-being, engaging stimulation, and having trusting relationships with adults in your life. Because only then can the factors that we're always talking about, like reading curriculums, qualifying teachers, and can become relevant. So because there is no educational infrastructure devoted to early literacy from birth to three when the brain development is taking place. So that's where the work of City's First Readers partners come in. For the foreseeable future, early literacy program will be provided by community-based organizations and institutions like our beloved libraries, not the education establishment. That's why we are here today to remind you of the critical services that is delivered by City's First Readers, and to remind you that our request for an enhanced funding of $1 million will support reaching more families and children throughout the city. Please take a moment, we have emailed you our City's First Readers Impact Budget Report, Annual Report. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other witnesses who want to testify in person, please let the Sergeant-at-Arms know, we're going to move on to those on Zoom. The following witnesses were signed up to testify remotely. We're going to start with Armando Rodriguez. And Alex Stein.
You may begin.
If there is anyone else present in the room or on Zoom who has not had the opportunity to testify but wishes to do so, please raise your hand. please raise your hand. And seeing no one else who wishes to testify, I just want to thank you. Karen, you're end of your testimony, which you know you could have finished, but you are so kind. And this is the part about when you have a room full of like women who are leading on this issue, we're also so polite. And I just want to say you have here that literacy is a social justice issue, and our democracy and our future rest on the foundation of an engaged electorate. And that starts very, very young. Besides the joy that is brought to our youngest readers, really the adventure and the joy of books even before they begin school. I think that's so important. So I want to thank you all for your work, for your dedication to the city, to this issue. And with that, we adjourn the hearing.